Well, good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna call this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask, good afternoon, y'all.
Good evening. I'm sorry.
We're gonna, we're gonna call this meeting to order and ask Pastor David Young if he can give us our prayer, as well as Councilman Pulliam. If Councilman Crum gives our pledge, don't see Mr. Fabian.
Let us pray. Father, what a joy and a privilege is to gather together as citizens and as this council. I pray, God, that you would provide unto them wisdom that decisions that are made today would be that which would be for the best of our community. And Lord, may we truly be one West Memphis.
Yes, Father.
And Lord, that you would guide us and direct us.
Yes.
And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let us stand, please. Place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Ms. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir.
This is Mike. You get me?
Yeah.
Mayor McClinton.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Martin.
Here.
Counselor Cat.
Here.
Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Here.
Counselor Mohammed.
Present.
Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Murray.
Here.
Counselor Pulliam.
Here.
Counselor Willis.
Here.
We have a quorum.
With a full quorum being present, I'm gonna ask for a motion to second to approve the community development block grant demolition table.
Salute.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It goes back to Paul. Tracy, was there any corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve is submitted, sir.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The minutes are approved. Old business, City Attorney, third reading.
Mayor, if I may ask, that we table this until January the 2nd, please?
Second.
Second.
In discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? This would be tabled to January the 2nd. Third reading number ordinance, City Attorney.
An ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located on Bill's Grill Road, permitting a communications tower in a C-2 open display commercial district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
In discussion. Hearing now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain, Mayor.
Okay. Call the roll, City Attorney.
Yes, sir. We're gonna have Counselor Cat.
Abstain.
Counselor Crum.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Holt.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed.
Yes.
Counselor Monday.
Yes.
Counselor Murray.
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam.
Yes.
Counselor Willis.
Yes.
Nine to one.
It passes. Can you get that ordinance or resolution? I mean, ordinance or number, I'm sorry.
That would be ordinance number 2526.
2526. We're gonna go to new business, and I wanna ask that we add this resolution for cash incentive. So I like it a motion and second to add this agenda.
Salute.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Councilman Pulliam?
Make a motion, we read R1 by title only, also 01 as well.
I get a second.
Salute.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? As answer the agenda and read by title only, City Attorney.
Resolution authorizing a cash incentive for Project Wind to locate and operate a business in the city of West Memphis.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Second.
In discussion.
One thing that I would like to say on this is actually, of course, I heard Alderman Mohammed, you know, echoing the last-minute deal. But at the same time, I mean, I feel it's a good one, and it's one of the, one of the things that I think AMP could help do to support, to bring business to our city. But now, I strongly agree with what she said earlier, so we hope in the near future that we can, you know, but this is a good thing, and it's one of the things that AMP, that we do to kind of help bring business into the city, and it's a great thing to do. Because I'm almost sure on our investment, the return will be great.
All right, Glenn, I just wanna add, we found out about this a little after 10:00 yesterday morning, so it hasn't been something that we've been knowing. Something just popped up, and I knew that we cannot miss this opportunity.
No, no, I strongly agree.
All right, so.
Strongly agree.
Thank you. So can we get a vote?
Yes.
Will call the roll? Yeah, call the roll.
Okay. We're gonna call the roll. It will be Counselor Cat.
Abstain.
Counselor Crum.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Holt.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed.
Yes.
Counselor Monday.
Yes.
Counselor Murray.
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam.
Yes.
Counselor Willis.
Yes, yes.
The resolution passes. Ms. City Clerk, when you get a resolution or number?
Our resolution number will be 21, 2212, I'm sorry, 2212.
2212.
Thank you, sir.
City Attorney, 01.
An ordinance to amend the Personnel Manual of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas regarding vacation and sick leave benefits and for other purposes.
This is on this first reading, and we're gonna, Personnel is having a meeting next Wednesday, am I correct? Councilwoman Hutch?
I'm sorry, ask that again.
The Personnel is next Wednesday?
Yes, yes, next Wednesday at noon, so.
And what about?
At the utility conference room.
Okay.
Right, and if you all wanted to add to, we would ask greatly that you would participate. Thanks.
All right. Well, that concludes our new business. I'm gonna need permission request. Sound like there's an echo on this mic for some reason.
Too close, yes, we need to get too close.
I need permission to be able to sign an agreement between the city and West Memphis and RGN, which in pre-council, I think you all asked to table it?
Yes, sir, table that until January 2nd. It's got one more process to go through before we make sure we get everything, all the information to you.
I get a second to table it?
Second.
Is we table it indefinitely?
January the 2nd.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? That's tabled, January 2nd. I need permission to sign an agreement for the scope of work and fee proposal for providing planning and professional engineering services for the development of the 10-mile-ba-year trail.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Counselor Cat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
No.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam?
Yes.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
I got the permission.
Nine to one.
I need permission, so I can distribute, I need permission to distribute $700 of my charity money to Deere's organization. I've been doing, what, probably the last 10 years? Also, let me get a motion and second, get it approved.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, that passes. Also, permission for David Mary's Charity Days to go to the R. Jackson Girls Club and One City Boys Club, can I get a motion?
Salute.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Also, we need to add Councilman Cat's distribution fund to agenda, can I get a motion and second to add?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, Frank, you can.
Councilman Cat wants to distribute his, he had $2,120.59 to distribute the Charity Day fund to families in transition.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Hold on, hold on, did I get a motion? Let me get a motion in a second.
Salute.
Motion in a second to approve.
Salute.
Second. All right, now, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, it's approved. Okay, I need a motion and a second to accept the community development block grant demolition bid.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Permission to accept the budgetary outlook, but I think your wishes are to table that.
Yes, sir, table until January the 2nd. Salute.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? It's tabled to January 2nd. Okay, permission to award the bid for the flooring of the Roberta Jackson Neighborhood Center. I get a motion and second.
Salute.
End of discussion.
Yes. I, it's just that I don't feel like to bid for John properly, and I'm not for going forward with this. My vote would be no on this.
So what are your suggestions, since it's near your neighborhood, what are your suggestions that we rebid everything, open it up for rebidding? Is that what you're asking?
Open it up for rebidding, but they said that they didn't want, they're not gonna do that, so I'm just just forming my opinion of it, I'm just.
Personally, I mean, I hear Councilperson Monday's concerns, but I personally feel like we need to go ahead and approve this so that we can move on with this renovation and get it completed under the contractor that is there now and not just bid out the flooring. I think we ought to get it done.
Well, they did it, but it wasn't correct. They bid it out the floor, but they didn't do it properly, so that's what I'm saying. I want, I want that to be heard. They bided it out, and it was up, they, they are the ones, the person that bided it out didn't give everybody all the information they needed to be able to bid it. That's what I'm saying.
But we did have a architect's letter of reference saying that he would prefer that we go with the contractor that's already there.
Now, the contractor that's already there, he started on the floor, is that correct? Mr. Luca, is Mr. Luca in the audience? Paul, will you come and explain to us where we are on this floor? I know we've got the asbestos part already underway, but we need to know about the flooring so we can properly dispose of this issue.
Yes, ma'am. The flooring became, came to our attention after the project was originally bid, and it was determined that it would be better to take up all of the flooring because of the asbestos in the tile. So we got quotes from the contractor, but we also got quotes from other flooring contractors. The contractor that we, that's in the building now, he did his own, his own measuring, and that's where his quotes come from. And the architect noticed that when he get, when he, when he gave out the measurements of the building to the other flooring contractors, there was, it wasn't quite exact, but he took their bids and extrapolated, because they gave us a per-square-foot bid, he took their bids, extrapolated what their bids would be if they would have been given the proper square footages. And then in his letter, and the quotes that accompany that letter, his basic recommendation was that time you got through all of that, the quotes were very close, the competitive quotes were very close, our contractor had one of the lower quotes even so, and his recommendation, because the quotes were so similar, so close together, that it would be better just to have one contractor working on the job rather than having two. So that was his recommendation, recommendation to stay with the original contractor and his bid for the flooring replacement.
So the original contractor has already started working on the floor?
No, ma'am.
No one has started on the floor at all? We just had the asbestos removed, is that?
Asbestos hasn't been removed yet, but that, that's in the process. But the contractor has done substantial work to other parts of the building, walls, ceilings, doors, so he's, he's been, you know, there was, the floor came after, after the fact.
Has he done the walls and stuff recently? Has the walls and all of it, you said he's done, has he done them recently, or was that in a previous?
Recently.
Okay, so they've been, okay.
Yes, 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 yes.
Well, my question would be if had redo on it, all these people that's actually quoted on it know what each one bid on it, who would actually figure out the low bid on that part of it? I mean, it gets a little complicated after all this.
It's a good question. The bids were very close, and I, sorry for the confusion, but that's how these projects sometimes it happens.
Paul, in your professional opinion, would you, how would you move forward with this project? Would you like this contractor finishing?
I would stay with just one contractor, because again, there's not, we're talking less than probably $1,500 in, in his price and the next compatible price.
Right.
Paul, how often have you gone with our architects' suggestions in past projects that we had? How often have you taken his word?
Almost exclusively, that's, we vet them before we hire them, and they're the experts, so we lean on their expert opinion. That don't mean they're infallible, but they are who we, we hired for their expert opinion.
And this particular one that we're speaking of, in the past, we've made decisions, or you brought things to council based on what he's suggested and or recommended?
Yes, ma'am, and he's done other work for the city as well, I believe, Eddie, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Yes, yes, he has, he has a good history with us.
Any further discussion? What is gonna be a decision in the council you all have to make?
I just have one more thing I'd like to say now. Now, this, this is the first time we're actually voting on the repairs of the floor itself, is that right? We've only, we've only approved his bid for the building, we've not approved his bid for the floor, that is getting kind of complicated. We've not approved the bid for the floor at all. We only approved the bid for the asbestos to be taken out. So is there any kind of, any reason why we cannot just rebid for the floor since there is some confusion at this particular time? What would prevent that from happening?
It's just adding more time to the project.
But let me ask you this, Mr. City Attorney, can we wait, can you give your opinion on this? Because it is confusing, very confusing.
Well, I mean, we talked about it a little bit in pre-council, and I don't have all the specific facts, but I, I like to lean on the advice of those who are the experts, that's the siren, I guess, and that's our architect. And I kinda look at it like a change order, really, a little bit. I mean, it's not, I realize it's a different bid, but it's really something that came up after you got into the property, and a lot of times, that's considered to be a change order that's approved by the architect, most of the time. This is a little bit different, but it seems to me that we're, we're spending a lot of time on this, which I think is okay, but it's not a lot of money that we're talking about, and you get two different contractors in there, and you're gonna have more problems. You're gonna have warranty problems, which I think is the biggest issue as far as I'm concerned. If you don't have one flooring person in there, then who's gonna cover it when something goes wrong? We're gonna have a fight between those two people, potentially, and I think you won't avoid that.
But I thought the whole thing was beat out altogether, you know?
It was bid out originally, as I recall it, and quality flooring was way low on the original bid, is what my recollection was.
Almost $30,000, no.
Yeah.
Call for the vote.
Yes, yes. Well, yep. You all find your heart.
Yes.
My heart is no good, I'm gonna follow my mind.
Counselor Cat?
Yes.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Abstain.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Pass.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes, based on all that I've heard in the city attorney's explanation, my mind is saying, yes, I think we should go for it.
Counselor Monday?
No.
Counselor Murray?
Pass.
Counselor Pulliam?
On the City Attorney's advice, I vote yes.
Counselor Willis?
I'm not going against anybody on this chamber, but I'm gonna go with what the city attorney recommends we do. This has been going on a while before I got here, so I'm kind of ignorant to all the facts, but I know there's some legitimacy to what Councilman Monday has brought up. We've gone and looked at it and all, but you know what? If this been going on three or four years, it's time to close it. I'm gonna vote yes.
Councilwoman Hutchinson, if you want to revote?
Pick it back with you, Mr. Willis, but I do wanna say to you, Mr. Monday, your point has been valid the whole time, and you stand strong in your convictions for what you're saying, the bids and how they were done. We do wanna see it, we're basing this off of what people think and recommendations. I will vote for it, but I do want to make it known that you did state your convictions on how to bid in council, so thank you for standing strong in your conviction.
That'll be a yes vote?
Yes, it's a yes vote.
Thank you. Counsel Harris, abstained. Counselor Harris, would you like to change your vote?
No.
And Counselor Murray?
Okay, I would like to say I share in Councilman Monday's opinion, but at the same time, the project does need to go forward, so I'll change to yes.
Also, let me add something, I get to you, Councilman Monday. When we voting, you know, you vote abstain, that's your vote. When you vote pass, when we come to everyone, we'll come back around and ask them, who voted pass, and they're gonna vote again.
Councilman Monday?
Yeah. There's nobody here, in here now, wants this building complete more than I do. It's in the neighborhood that I, I serve in, and the people in the neighborhood need this building, but I just wanna see things done fair. I mean, and if, I mean, it's been going on a long time, yeah, but that's not my fault. But I wanna see things done fair, and I don't think they were in this case because the people that, that, that bid it didn't get all the information, and I don't think things should be run like that. I think things should be run fair. I, like, again, Frank, I don't know the guy. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know him, don't, you know, I'm talking about the man that's got the project. I don't know him, and it's not him. But he did work there before, and I didn't lack it, and if you had looked at it and seen it, you wouldn't have lacked it either, but that's beside the point. It's just that I wanna see things done fair, and that's all. Thank you.
When the vote was?
We have eight yes votes, one abstention, and one no.
All right, passes. Permission to pay CNT solutions, $62,500.
Salute.
Second.
End of discussion.
So you said $68,000?
$62,000.
$62,000.
Five oh five.
So that covered a period from what to what now, on that? Ms. Pulliam, Windows 10 has to be done by January the 20th, and so to upgrade or replace all of our computers, the utility department has set $37,138, and data process, which is the rest of the city, was $25,367, and they, and they feel like they will all be done before January the 1st. But this is a requirement for Microsoft. If you, if you don't have Windows 10 by January 20th, you're out of luck, because they will no longer, no longer be in service.
Are we gonna get computers for the entire city, or is this just for?
This is new computers and replacements.
Right, for everybody?
That's needed, yes.
Okay.
This doesn't include the police department, they've done their own.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I did get a motion. Yeah, I'm favor, I oppose, all right. Community reports, rich talks on my right. Councilman Monday, you said no.
No.
Counselor Holt, parks, airport. Counselor Crum?
Yeah, let me, let me pull them up real quick. We met on November the 26th. Susan Cook with Garber went over the proposed CIP, which is capital improvement projects for the next five years. She proposed that a beacon replacement, as well as a desired bidding services for the North Apron Rehab Project be done for 2021. The commission approved their budget for 2020, and Kate, leave this one out, Sanna will be coming to the airport on, December the 15th, from 2:00 to 3:30. That's my report.
Councilwoman Hutchinson?
Yes, sir.
Personnel?
Yes, sir, Personnel Committee met on the 21st. On the 21st, and they are continuing to work through the sick vacation time policy with, which is included, and that's what we've been working on, in which we continue, we're asking more time to continue to work on it and look at possible changes or revisions, and that's pretty much what Personnel Committee has done.
Councilwoman Mohammed?
Yes, Public Works met this past Tuesday, December 3rd. My report is as follows. Recycling, the total for recycling in November was 21,280 pounds. There was no, there was one E-Waste pickup, and we disposed of 300 tires. The city engineers report, Ms. Amanda Hicks, is as follows. The South Loop, there are three geotechnical borings waiting to be completed so right-of-way plans can be submitted and began right-of-way allocation. The Lear Street Bridge, the project is under environmental review at this time. Our doctor will be designing this project. The East Barton Project, we've had some cold wet conditions which has slowed the progress of that particular project. The next step is having the roadway undercut stabilized with the line so the compaction test will pass. The Reading Street Project, we've gotten prices on two different types of bridges and are studying the budget to see which option is the best for the crossing. The 10-mile-ba-year project, Ms. Hicks has asked Rob Rash with the St. Francis Levy District to come to speak with the committee about how the government earmarks money for the projects. The Corps is working on cleaning of the bio, but the project got out of, got put on pause for bridge improvement projects. She's looking for fundings to help with this project. There was no code enforcement report. The code enforcement officer, Mr. Phillips, has said things are going smoothly, he's doing a wonderful job. And of course, Mr. Tracy Cat was there to pass out wish lists for the Public Works Department, and all these things are gonna be discussed during our budget hearing. It's a wish list, there's a lot of things that are going on in the sanitation department and the street department, so there are a lot of things that we are gonna have to discuss, so Mr. Cat was there and Ms. Hicks and Ms. Stan, which gave us a lot of information to study over and to look over. During this particular meeting also, bonuses were discussed, it may not have been the proper time, but we did bring it up, and everybody do agree that bonuses should be given, but at this time, we've got to look at the budget, and it may not be anything, may not be, may not be anything we can do this year, but our chairman, budget chairman, he discussed, perhaps we can look at it for next year and try to put earmark money for that particular project. And there were a few other things that we discussed. All I can say is, the meeting ran smoothly, and we dismissed on time.
Counselwoman Mohammed. Councilman Kat, budget?
Yes, sir, I have handed out a copy of the sales tax report for everybody in pre-council, and handed out the budget schedule starting next week. This will be the first opportunity to sit down and visit with each department head. Once we go through this initial first review, council will direct budget, who to bring back in, and so we can continue to schedule further meetings in order to try to make sure we get everything we need before you make a final decision.
Could I say something, just to piggyback on police? One other thing that I wish we look at, of course, I know we've been talking about looking at the budget for quite some time now, and with the police and the fire department, which we've been talking about this for three, four years, looking at certificate, you know, giving certain rewards for certain certificate that they have, you know, that, you know, above and beyond, plus the college. We've been talking about this for a while, but I wish that they could get together with Frank and you, and see what it's going to cost us, you know, I'm just saying to do that. You know, come up with some kind of figures, because they're the first one that's going to be on next week.
Yes, they are.
So if possible, I would like to see them get together with you all, and we can see what we can do, come up with, see what it's going to cost us.
And you want to contact them Saturday?
I will.
Lady Coots, a report?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Porter from A and P.
As you know, I passed out a copy, as well.
I think what you all wishing, that you all briefly speak on the council floor.
Next time, we'll do that.
Say that last. Councilman Willis, the chamber meet again, did they meet?
We had met yet.
Okay. Counselwoman Harris, did you want to add anything? Councilman Murray?
No.
I want to have one more thing. This is, you know, kind of forefashioned, this is to Frank, we're talking about getting new computers. Have you, has anyone ever thought about getting laptops for our city council members, so we can do away with all this paper?
I have already even thought about that, because I think right now, we still carry these around. We live in the 1920s, and it's 2019, so I mean, I think our concern is making sure that everyone can be acclimated to using it, when need to, so that has been discussed. Now, we're going to go to presentations. I'm going to ask Chief Eddie West, would you come forward, please? Okay, Chief, nice. Oh, yeah, and we're going to ask Mr. Tanner Carroll.
So Tanner answered a call for us back in October, and he was able to find some evidence that another officer didn't find, so for that, for the diligence that he shows us, for the dedication, for the artwork he does, we're selecting him for Officer of the Month in October. No worries?
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Are there any announcements?
Yes, Councilman. This evening, this evening at, at 5:00, we're going to celebrate the life of a citizen here in West Memphis. She's 96 years old, she worked in this city for years and years promoting civil rights and just a lot of different things, dealing with the school board, boys and girls clubs. Ms. Barry Brown, we're going to celebrate at Mother King Park at 5:00. We're going to have some choir to come out and sing and give her proclamation, and I'm hoping the mayor will be able to be there at 5:00 this evening. Ms. Barry Brown, she's been here, just a lot, a lot of us know her personally, she's been here, and she did a lot of work in our city, and we just want to show appreciation to her. Thank you.
Any other announcements? We had no citizen requests?
I'd like to ask all the committees, please turn your committee reports in to the conference.
Anything? We have no citizen requests? Now, Counsel Pulliam?
Second.
All in favor by? We're jumping.